Good evening. At this time, we'll call the Hamlet City Council to order. First item of business is item number two, which we will have a moment of silence. Remember those who have COVID and who have passed on and just a moment of silence, please. Amen. Counsel, you have before you the agenda for tonight. What are your wishes?
Move that we adopt?
I second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. All right, counsel, you also have before you at this time the approved minutes, approval for the minutes of the January 25th special meeting in closed session. What are your wishes? Got a motion?
Second.
I've got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. At this time, we come to item number five, which is comments from attendees. If you're here tonight and you have comments for the city council, please come forward and we will say your name and we will entertain you. Okay, if there's no one, at this time, we'll close comments for attendees. We'll move along to item number six, new business. We have before us tonight a public hearing for the Harrington rezoning at Freeman Mill and June Mill Roads. At this time, I will open the floor for a public hearing. And anyone that's here tonight that would like to speak on this rezoning, please come forward and state your name.
How's everybody doing?
Yes, sir.
My name is Theron Harrington. I'm the one that's doing the rezoning, me and my wife. We own that property. We also rented a house on that land as well, too. So I'm here to start in a new business, doing a welding shop in that building that's on the end. Already have another business, which is Gold Green Cleaning Team. I got a carpet cleaning business, which I do the carpets here as well, too, in here in City Hall. So yeah, we're starting another business on our own land. That's why we're here to get the rezoning.
Okay, counsel, you have any questions for? Okay, at this time then, I will close the comments. Thank you, Mr. Harrington.
Yes, sir.
Let everybody out. Move along to item number seven. Counsel, general statutes require the board to complete a consistency statement prior to making a zoning map amendment. The consistency statement is included in enclosure two. I'd ask for a motion to adopt the consistency statement indicating either proposed or not in accordance with the Hamlet City ordinance.
Move that we adopt the consistency statement as presented.
Okay, that it is in compliance?
Yes.
Okay. Further comment? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. At this time, I'd ask for a motion to approve the rezoning.
Make a motion, we approve the rezoning.
Got a motion?
I second.
Got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Thank you. Are we good on that? Everything's fine? So your zoning's taking place here, okay? Yes, sir.
Good luck.
You're welcome.
Counsel, we have before us tonight a memo of understanding to allow the AMVETS to use the old police hut building on Boyd Lake Road. I guess first of all, Mr. Christians, you want to comment on this?
Sure. This is a memorandum of understanding to establish some basic terms for us to explore a long-term use of that facility with the AMVETS organization. During this time period, which is established as five years, we will explore a longer-term use. The AMVETS is looking at making it their home, their permanent home for their post to service veterans in our community. And this agreement is not a lease, but it establishes terms so that we can negotiate a longer-term agreement. So that they invest in the building, they can make it their home for a longer period of time than what's prescribed in the agreement for you. All the articles, this memorandum of agreement or memorandum of understanding has been reviewed by the post commander, Mr. Ed O'Neill. We've gone back and forth on a few things and ultimately, basically, I just adopted, put everything that he requested in the agreement without any objections. And it's agreeable to that party and it's before you, the city council, tonight for your consideration.
Did you, Mr. Martin, did you have some questions on this?
Well, I only have, right now, I only have one that I'm kind of concerned about. It would be the agreement number three. Where it says the AMVETS shall be entitled to non-exclusive use of the building for a period of five years. Well, all that's well and good. Unless the city of Hamlet provides a notice of termination of this memorandum sooner. And the city may terminate this memorandum for any reason or no reason at all. Don't that seem to be a little, a little heavy? I mean, in other words, why would anybody agree to go down there and remodel a dilapidated building? And it was scheduled to be burned, hadn't been used in years, it's in very bad disrepair. And then all of a sudden, get it done, get it fixed, and then for some odd reason or no reason, the city manager terminates their agreement.
That's a valid concern, Mr. Martin. And I know when I was talking with Matt about this, this is written not so that the city can pull the rug out from underneath the AMVETS. It's so they can start using the building without there being a lease on the property. I think if the AMVETS come back to the city in a month or six months or whatever it is and say, we want to do this project, then we'd come back and say, okay, let's do a lease. And once they have a lease, then, you know, they have a right to exclusive use, they control it, they have some other protections. And this is really just a use agreement saying that we're not using it so you can. So that's not written to kick them out, because I'd have the same concerns that you've just expressed if I were the AMVETS. It's really just give them the breathing room to be able to figure out if this building's going to work for them or not.
I'd also, maybe, I'll ask this in the form of a question. Is the, I guess, the way it's written now, the city council would have to terminate the MOU, not necessarily the city manager?
That's correct. So there are a couple places in the MOU where the manager has some delegated authority. Like he can say, you know, we need an extra security light here or there or something, but only council terminates this agreement. So Matt couldn't just unilaterally do that.
He didn't say that. That's why I was concerned about it. It would seem to me that it would be a council decision, but it's not in writing.
And what I'd say is, Matt can only act if he has explicitly delegated authority, and otherwise, it's always your decision, but we could make that explicit and just say, you know.
Well, I mean, if it's understood and everybody agrees that it's understood, I don't have any problem with it, but I just didn't like the sound of it. They could do all this and then, for whatever reason or no reason, terminate. That just don't seem to be fair to the AMVETS.
No, I agree. I mean, I think that that's certainly not what we're going for here. We're just trying to make sure it's clear that it's not a lease.
Well, if everybody's satisfied with it and it's, the fact that we now know that it'd be a council decision as to whether or not they terminate a lease or whatever, then I don't have any problem with that, but I just didn't like the term. Can terminate that lease for reason or no reason? In other words, don't you have to have a reason? Just say, we like the building you fixed up, we like it, and now we want it.
Yes, sir.
That's what it sounds like.
Yeah, I agree with you, brother Eddie.
I like it.
But I think, I read that number three, and it caught my eye, too, but it says here, the city of Hamlet.
Yeah, well.
And that's where it comes in. It's not the city manager.
Well, it might not be, but it's from the city manager.
It comes through the city, the council, yeah.
This is agreement from the city manager.
Yeah, from the city manager.
They don't say city council or city manager.
And this is just a memorandum of understanding. This is not a lease.
Well, I understand. If everybody's happy with it, I don't have a problem.
The only thing I'm not happy with is, why did we go for only five years?
Well, that's a good question, Mr. Sellers. And again, the idea here is, we wanted to create enough breathing room that they can figure out if this is really right for them. And if they come back to the city and say, we really want to use this building, we want to invest some money, then I think our recommendation is going to be, why don't we replace this memorandum with a lease? Now, under the state statutes, if you have a lease that's more than 10 years, you have to treat it like the sale of property. So that means if we had a really long lease, now we have to, in theory, put it out for, you know, for bids or upset bids or something like that. If it's less than 10 years, but a year, more than a year, you have to give 30 days' notice, which is not a big deal, but there are just a number of little things. The other issue with a lease, aside from the state statutes, is typically if I have a lease on property, I have the right to exclusive use. And there's some other guarantees that you have, you know, just like a tenant has when they lease property. And this is very exploratory. I mean, my sense was that the AMVETS are interested, but they're not sure if the building's going to be right for them. So we wanted to keep it clear that we're really just letting them use the building, and so that's why it's not a lease.
I see. But what if after a year or two years, the AMVETS decide, well, we don't want it anymore? Then they just turn it back over to the city?
Yeah.
Yep, that's right.
Because this is not a lease. No problem with that.
I've got a question. So what's the purpose of that building to the city now? That building is on, is it not condemned? I mean, I'm just thinking, if this group is wanting to come in here and get this and fix it up and do this and that and the other, wouldn't we be better off to let them do that, enter into an agreement to sell it to them for a really small amount of money and get it off of our books?
I think that's a great question, and I think that's, while they're exploring the investment that it would take and the physical improvements that they're exploring, whether or not it's the right place for them. As Mr. Morpheus mentioned, we can do the same thing, and him and I are going to be collaborating along with the city council to determine what is the most appropriate way to establish this long-term use? Is it a lease? Is it a long-term lease? Is it some sort of sale or anything like that? And that's why this MOU or memorandum of understanding has this wide breadth. So this is just establishing basic terms for everyone to explore the options and come back with a final, this is what we want to do.
Yeah, and the only other thing I'd add is, and if you've ever bought a house or something, you've had this experience. Usually, when you have a due diligence period to buy something or even lease a commercial property, the timeframe's kind of short. You know, it's like 90 days or something like that, to do whatever you got to do. And the sense we got from the AMVETS is, we might like to start using the building, we might start looking at that, but it was just sort of open-ended. So we wanted to do this so that there's really not a time constraint on them. Because I, and I gather, they may still have some organizational things they have to do to get up and running.
That's correct, and you hit the nail on the head. Like, they want to start working on it, just kind of cleaning it up. And just as they explore the possibility, I think they're planning on doing some stuff down there this weekend. So, you know, assuming that we have some general terms of understanding, that's something we want to facilitate. And their meeting is later this month, and should they kind of do some of that legwork? And as Mr. O'Neill said to me earlier this week, he said, we're going into this eyes wide open. He said, we're not exactly sure what the end game looks like, but we're going to go into it eyes wide open, and we've got some work to do. And his membership's very excited, and we're very confident that we're going to be able to come to final terms, whatever that may be. And this is just to kind of make it clear what we're doing and why we're doing it, and it's not, by no means is this the final say.
I'm just thinking, that building is, I mean, it's in bad shape. If somebody's going to be going there and fix that thing up, I mean, we'd be better off to let that happen and.
They may not want the, I mean, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what the ownership wants, or if they want the responsibility or the burden of ownership. I'm just not sure what their organization is.
Somebody's going to have to put some money in it. I mean, that building's in dire straits. And they're a good organization, I mean.
And to that point, if it turns out they want to buy the building, there are some ways we can structure it so that that can be done in a favorable way to them. The other thing, and I left this out, that we needed the MOU, even if we're not leasing it, is just simple liability management for the city.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I understand that. I'm just, yeah.
So that's the reason we're not just, you know, letting them go in and kind of use it.
I'd go back to Jesse's question, though. Has the building been condemned?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
It hasn't been used in at least like four-ish years, I think, but it's been left alone longer than that.
I think the police department did some patchwork on the roof. It's been a long time ago.
About four years ago. Only John was still, gee.
Yeah, he's been gone a long time. Probably been eight years.
I think Mr. Waters used it sparingly. There's some training documents and stuff down there. That's the oldest thing down there, and that's kind of where I got my reference point.
Yeah, Scott, Scott, that was last night.
Yeah, they have some, they have some membership that's very excited about it, that are contractors, and they're looking at putting some sweat equity in it. And I think that they've got some skilled tradesmen that are part of their membership, so they're really going to, I mean, they're really going to bootstrap this thing together. So they're excited about it, we want to explore it, and we want to allow them to explore it, and that's the purpose of this agreement.
I'll make a motion and go forth.
Thank you.
Second.
And I have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Very good, thank you. Okay. Counsel, we have before us tonight the tax releases, which amounts to, what, $23 and something?
Twenty-six cents.
Twenty-six, yeah. What are your wishes on that?
Move that we accept.
Okay, got a motion? I got a motion. Need a second? I got a second. All in favor, say aye. Oppose likewise. All right, we'll move along at this time to other business from the city manager's report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. I just want to mention that this last month has been tough, and I'm not saying anything y'all don't know. But, you know, the COVID cases really affected our organization, affected our community, and I'm really looking forward to the trend that we're on now with those things declining. And I appreciate everyone's patience. There were a couple times where, you know, we either fell a little bit behind on leaf and limb or certain pickups. But, you know, we're playing catch-up on that, and we hope that to be called up very soon. And if you have any concerns, you can call City Hall, call Public Works. We'll make sure we can get you prioritized if you've got a big need. So I appreciate everyone's patience on that. The other main item I'd like to report to the board and the community tonight is that the sewer line that's on Bridges Street is nearing completion. We hope to have that road reopened within the next week or so, pending weather. But the temporary pumps are ready to be removed. We're just waiting for the contractor to pick them up, and then they'll pick up the piping as well. And then just move the material out of the way, repay the streets, that kind of thing. So we hope to have that project complete and that road reopened within the next couple of weeks. So other than that, that concludes my report.
Got any questions for manager? If not, we'll move along with comments, counsel. Mr. Martin?
I don't have anything at this time.
Mr. Sellers?
I would just like to thank people in attendance. I'd like to thank for the hard work for the council, the city manager, and all the city employees, and thank you for a job well done and the interest of all the citizens of Hamlet. And I just urge all the citizens of Hamlet in the meeting, but with concern, to please attend these meetings and bring your concerns to the council. And that way, you can get an answer straight, and we can understand what's going on. That's all. That concludes all my statements.
Thank you, Mr. Sellers. Mr. Stewart?
I want to say, as we celebrate our Black History Month, a couple of things I wanted to read. Our nation was founded on an idea that all of us are created equal and deserve to be treated with equal dignity throughout our lives. It is a promise that we never fully lived up to, but one that we have never, ever walked away from. The long shadows of slavery, Jim Crow, redlining, and the blight of systematic racism that still diminishes our nation today. Hold Black America back from reaching our full promise. But by facing those tragedies openly and honestly and working together as one people, we deliver our Americans' promise of equity and dignity for all. We become a stronger nation, a more perfect version of ourselves. Across the generations, countless African-Americans have demonstrated profound moral courage and resilience to help shape our nation, not only our nation, but our city of Hamlet and Richmond County. I thank all my constituents for allowing me to serve, and I also thank all my colleagues for working with me. Thank you so much. Have your Black History Month.
I might say, while we're at it, that I did sign a proclamation back the first of the month, recognizing the MLK Day celebrations and the Black History Month. You have anything else, Mr. Stewart? Okay, Ms. Covington?
First of all, I'd just like to say, we've had, again, an unusual year so far. We seem to be making a history of this. We have had snow or ice three weekends in a row, which has put the folks at the city shop, I'm sure, on their toes and kept them extra hours. And the entire City Hall crew and city shop and the police and the fire have been working and covering their responsibilities, well, most of the year, for about six weeks now with skeleton forces, because people were either out due to sickness or due to quarantine. And, but we kept everything going. We got the jobs done. And I have had, I can't tell you how many people say how thankful they were for the people getting back. Maybe not as promptly as usual, but picking up leaves and limbs and getting them off the street and helping them to get the mess cleaned up. They've been up, I've seen them cutting limbs from people that are broken in front of their houses. And so we've got a wonderful group, and as usual, I won't say that we've got the best city employees than anybody in Richmond County.
Hello?
That's it.
Thank you. Mr. McQueen?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Counsel, we're going to need to revisit, I believe, this issue about picking up furniture and stuff. I rode by a house the other day on a certain street, and they looked like they had all the furniture in the house stacked out there on the side of the road. And, you know, we had to pay extra to move that stuff. And I just say, you know, we'd look at it and then we'd go away from it, but it's costing the city a lot of money right now to haul all, I mean, all the furniture in the house sitting out on the side of the road. So I don't know what your feelings are.
I rode by one today and was the same thing, and we may be talking about the same.
We probably are.
And it comes in, and it isn't just the furniture and the heavy stuff that they're putting out there for our employees to handle. It's also the limbs and the bushes and stuff they're putting out there that are causing our city employees to pick them up.
Well, that doesn't cost us anything for that.
It doesn't?
No, we dump it in our city dump out here.
Okay.
But furniture, we're paying how much? $200 a load or something like that?
I'm not sure exactly how much it is a load, but it's interesting you mention this. I just had a, I think I saw the same house as well. And Mr. Stubbs and I, the Public Works Director, have had several conversations about this. And we just started the conversation today about adopting a clear policy, one that would benefit the staff, it would benefit the community, it would benefit the council to understand what the expectations are, the costs, all of that, so that we can make sure that we have a safe, efficient, productive service.
And sometimes, sometimes it's heavier than the people we've got out there to pick it up, so we're going to usher violations.
Well, what about, some of that stuff, I have seen in the last couple of days also, Mayor, have stuff like upright freezers.
Yeah, I know.
Refrigerators, washing machines, these kind of stuff doesn't need to go to the curb, in my opinion.
The metal goods go to the junkyard. We get paid for it.
Yeah.
You put a refrigerator out there, somebody's probably going to take it.
Yeah, they'll be gone tomorrow.
You put a refrigerator over anything, it's going to be gone within a day. Somebody's going to pick it up.
Yeah, going off what the mayor said, that is true. So asking Mr. Morpheus, so in those situations like that, we've got rules in place that you're not supposed to do that. It's not, it's not anything that, you know, people know that you're not supposed to do it. They do it anyway. And what we normally see is landlords, once tenants move out, they just haul it to the road. And we're going to pick it up because of the fact this is an eyesore and this and that and the other. My thing is, civilly speaking, from a civil penalty, can we attach fines to that when we pick it up? And attach it to where it's got to be paid before we have the water turned back on for the next tenant? Because we got to have some kind of teeth in that ordinance to stop people from doing it, or they're going to keep doing it. I know people that go out and work job businesses, their own business, and they bring material back and put out by the road.
Absolutely.
And until we start popping them big time with the money, and I'm talking about making them pay it, or you don't turn the water back on, everything around here is just going to keep looking worse and worse and worse.
And it's costing the other citizens of the city.
I mean, you might drive by today, there's a mattress on the side of the road, a couch or freezer, and then somebody else moves out. It's the same thing over and over again, and we're the ones getting the shaft on it, because we're having to pay somebody to go pick it up, take it over there. We don't have equipment to do it. The people have to pick that up. You pick it up, you're going to throw it back out, you're going to have workers' comp claims. What can we do from the financial standpoint, not just to give them a fine, like we do with some of these abandoned houses and some of these houses out of code, and they build up $100,000 worth of fines, and people say, the city of Hamlet's not doing anything to make sure that this neighborhood's clean or that neighborhood's clean, to where they got to pay it or they can't get the water turned back on now?
Let me take a look at that and get back with staff and with you. I know there are some restrictions on not allowing water to be turned on, particularly when you have, say, a utility in a tenant's name. And you have, this is not really the question you asked, just as an example. You have like an unpaid utility bill for a previous tenant, you typically can't prevent a new tenant from signing up. There are some things sometimes where if you have a list of outstanding charges that are owed to the city, you can prioritize which ones get paid off first. So let me take a look at that, get with staff, because we certainly don't want to do anything we can't do, but to your point, maybe we can put some teeth into this.
Right. And while you're looking at it, anybody that brings stuff back from a business and dumps out that has to be picked up, they need to be popped, too.
If somebody is in the process of doing this, I mean, like today, and you see it, if you see it actively going on, what happens?
Yeah, so all of these, this is a very important conversation, and I think we're on the right track with making something happen with it. But to answer your question, typically, when we see these things, we make direct contact with whoever's on site. Either the Public Works Director himself or one of his staff members will go down there, typically hand-deliver a letter that basically says, this is outside of the scope of the service that we provide, and you need to take this stuff and haul it off somewhere else. And we can help you with that, because, you know, it's kind of a catch-22. We want people to improve properties, or maybe they're demoing an abandoned house, and maybe it's not furniture, maybe it's a bunch of sheet rock or something else. There are instances where we want to facilitate that, and we want to say, hey, look, you come to City Hall, we'll get you a trailer, we'll put it out here. You load that sucker up, and we'll haul it off, you know? So we make contact first. We tell them, this is outside of the scope of our services, and these are the services that we can provide to help you achieve the means to whatever end you have.
Well, I just, you know, and I guess they were at least discreet enough not to mention a name. But I noticed out on Highland Avenue today, they are actively stripping a house. It's construction debris, cabinets, furniture, whatever, and it's right next to the side of the road coming from East Rockingham. So, and that's going on. So, and that's going on actively right now.
Yeah, yeah, we've made contact with them.
Okay, all right.
That was, that, with the, we've all kind of alluded to the same property, I believe, and.
I don't know what they did, but I just, I was going to ask you about it.
Well, I certainly did, and that was the conversation that Billy and I had today, where I said, hey, do we have a clear policy on this? And he said, uh, well, we, here's what we do, you know, this kind of thing. I said, well, we need to have a clear policy, and we need to engage, uh, the community, the staff, the city council, and get everybody on the same page and find out other remedies that we may have to take corrective action to prevent, you know, just to dump on the street. I mean, because that's what we saw, at least that's what I saw on Highland Avenue, and you did too.
Yeah.
And then they put it out there, and they leave it, they don't listen to a thing you say, and we pick it up, and we pay it, and we do all the other stuff.
Yeah, I'm good.
Just keep walking.
Until we put a fine on them that has to be paid, it's going to keep happening. It's been happening since 2005 at least, that I know of, and I'm sure Ms. Covington's seen it, and Bill's seen it since then. But at some point, I mean, this is the neighborhoods we're talking about.
And we even offer some kind of limited pickup, you know, provided they call the city shop and give us adequate notice, then we'll send somebody to pick it up.
Or house full of furniture.
But not a whole house full of furniture and debris.
And a lot of these people's got businesses and doing it, and there's, they're charging them for it probably, and.
Well, you know, we, we corrected that situation with a tree cutter several years ago, that if you pay somebody to cut a tree, they got to haul it off. And that's been working very well. Sometimes Billy has to go talk to them, but.
We still fight that too, but, uh, but again, it's about making contact and, and saying, hey, look, here's what you've got to do to actually get this going.
That's part of it, it's about, it's about charging.
And I think it's up to us and the people in the community, when they see this happening, to tell somebody. Don't just ride by it and gripe about it, do something about it, speak up.
When you start renovating a house and cleaning it, do you need a permit from the city to start that and do that work?
I would say typically no, unless, unless you're demolishing the house.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, it depends on what you're doing. You're doing just like a little renovation of the kitchen, probably not.
No. You're adding on or anything like that.
I see.
Or typically when you get into permitting requirements is when you're rebuilding, like when you're trying to put, you're renovating that kitchen, you're putting in those new outlets or faucets, and you hit those trays, and that's when you, you need permits.
Well, that's when we're renovating, that's when the stuff starts going to the side of the road.
Okay, well, we got that out of the way.
All right.
Anyway, I, I, I just want to thank all of the city employees for the work that they have done over the last months with the COVID situation. I'd also like to thank them, as Ms. Covington said, for the work they've done on the streets. We've just had a terrible time playing catch-up. I noticed today, there's, people are now starting to get their pine limbs and such out there on the side of the road, and the guys are picking it up as fast as they can, and it's appreciated. And, uh, I don't think I've got anything else other than that, and I would move along to item number 13 and ask for a motion to go into closed section per natural NC general statute 143, 318, 11A, 3 and 6, for attorney-client privilege and personnel.
I'll make a motion to go to closed session.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Thank you.